All right, I will call to order special town council meeting for Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Ms. Pierce-Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
All right, four of us are present, which constitutes a quorum. We have just one agenda item today, which is proposed executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four B and E CRS for conferences with an attorney for the town for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to lawsuit between the Town Development Authority and Timnis Lands LLC and for determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding possible mediation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of moving to executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. All right, four zero, we will proceed to executive session. Ms. Steffel, you make a record as to our duty to record this or not?
Thank you.
Council has concluded its executive session, and if there's no objection, I will adjourn the special meeting, and we will reconvene at six o'clock for our normal council meeting. Yeah, Carolyn, I assume you've got a copy of that, right? All right, good evening. I will call to order the Tuesday, September ninth, regular Timnith Town Council meeting. Ms. Spears Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmanfred?
Present.
Mayor Protem Luke Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
All right, four council members are present. Councilmember Lake's absence was expected this evening, so we will go ahead and continue. Council, any requests to amend the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on members of town concern. I will note that we have two items this evening with a scheduled public hearing. If you would like to speak to council on item seven A or seven B, we would ask you to speak when those items are called. If you'd like to address council on anything else, we can take it at this time. In terms of folks that have signed up, it looks like I have one person, but those are on seven A and seven B specifically, is that right? Okay, great. Very well. No one has signed up, but is there anyone else present who would like to address council on any other matters? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. It consists of one item this evening, which is approval of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Town Council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. I'll get over here this evening. Nothing too exciting. Fall Festival is coming up this weekend on Saturday. I think it's eleven to three. Always a good time, and just want to congratulate, I mean, we might be getting ahead of ourselves, but our wonderful, including my son, Timnith High School golf team is absolutely crushing it. So congratulations to those guys. All right, indeed. That's great. Councilmember Jenkins?
Nothing to report.
Mayor Protem? I will be brief. We kicked off the Citizens Academy last week, so that is up and running. Thank you for everyone who's helping to make that happen. And then also, September twenty-sixth is the big Timnith versus Wellington football game at Canvas Stadium in Fort Collins. So I, I hope that we can get a good showing. Of course, our, our high school is the same footprint as the Wellington High School, but, but I'm convinced that we will be victorious. Yes. All right, council, anything else before we move on? All right, we will move on to our regular agenda, which consists of one item this evening. This is Resolution fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the work order with Wilson Company Incorporated Engineers and Architects for the Old Town Transportation Plan. Ms. Koyvumini?
Good evening, council members. We have an exciting project to discuss, the contract for Wilson. I want to give you guys a brief project overview, and then we can dive into some details. So the Old Town Transportation Plan will look at analysis, outreach, concepts, and implementation in the Old Town area. This includes Main Street, Second, and Fourth Avenue. We'll be specifically focusing on collecting data. Now that Timnith Parkway is open, there are a lot of shifts in our traffic patterns, so we want to create a new plan to guide our decisions going forward. That could include anything from signings, striping, crosswalks, parking, and also giving us a roadmap for future intersection types. So as we do experience that growth, what is the plan for those intersections now? When are we going to hit those triggers in the future? And what do those intersections look like? So this will set the framework for us as that area continues to develop with some improvements that will happen this year, and then also set into the future. Included in this, like I said, is some analysis. We do want to collect our data now. We want to look at our future land use and our growth, figure out what we currently have and where we can look to improve. We'll be doing some extensive outreach with the Old Town Businesses, residents, Timnith Elementary, in order to guide our, provide the data, provide recommendations, but also get that input, develop concepts and cost estimates, some of which our town staff can go ahead and implement this year, look for those early action items, and then set those long-term strategies as we kind of progress into the future. Goals for the project are to improve circulation for all of our users, so bikes, cars, peds, scooters, you name it, apparently everything but donkeys in Timnith. Apparently, that's out of our code. We want to enhance walkability and connections to schools and businesses. We want to create a shared transportation business, both with the residents and with Timnith Businesses downtown. We want to balance, we want to, we want to invest correctly, so having this plan will help guide those investments instead of just, you know, chasing our tails. So we want to have this plan so we can set a tone for that. And then phase implementation, so we can better budget for future years for capital projects. Project timeline. Wilson and Company was selected for this project with next phase. Those are two very great consultants. That was using the general engineering on-call, so there was a request for proposals. The anticipated award is today. Starting with that, they will begin public outreach and data collection. We did want to wait till after school was in session, so we could count cars correctly, so that's why you're seeing this now. We'll be developing the plan, going out to businesses and having those meetings, and developing the recommendations which will push us into the next year. We do expect to be able to see some of those more immediate actions, like signing and striping, later this year as we kind of break that up. Resolution summary. This was included in the twenty twenty-five CIP budget. We have the total contract award of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, which is within the budget. Advantages: This is going to enhance our safety, walkability, and circulation in Old Town. It's a data-driven approach, featuring community engagement to target the most effective way to use our money and balance our improvements, and it provides us a roadmap for future capital investments. Disadvantages: If we do not do this work order, we will not have a structured plan to have a data-driven approach for transportation in Old Town. We recommend approval of this resolution. Questions?
Thank you. Council questions?
Yeah, well, first of all, I, I think this is a really great way to go. I didn't hear you mention, I, I know you talked about the future, but I didn't hear you mention the possibility that the rec center goes in there, which is going to be, if it does, it will be, have a huge traffic impact adjacent to this area. So I'm wondering if in this hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, if there are funds in there to include a traffic study related to the possibility of a rec center, assuming it, it, it passes.
Specifically, no. However, we will account for that future land use, and when we develop those triggers for the Fourth Street intersection, that recommendation would be based on that. But a further traffic study would be needed pending the actual rec center, or not.
So if...
With or without, we would have a, this is what we're kind of going for. So if we're reaching this amount of volume of traffic, this is the answer. If we're here, if we're lesser traffic, then this is where we want to be, as far as types of intersections.
So the anticipation for council would be that if the funding mechanism passes in November, that you would, you folks would be coming back to us, looking to do a traffic study that would anticipate traffic around the rec center? And then that data would get incorporated with this, this long-term plan?
Yes.
Sort of.
The, sort of, yes. That, that the TIS, the Traffic Impact Study, is a lot more specific. This will be more like triggered, so it's like when we hit ten thousand vehicles, this is the type of intersection. Currently, we have a four-lane roadway. If we were to hit ten thousand vehicles, we may want to start looking at a X, Y, Z. If we hit twenty thousand, we will be looking...
It does, in effect, it does anticipate the, the possibility that the rec center happens and the traffic that comes with it. It's just not specific.
And then that would also be baked into the actual rec center itself, so I wouldn't be coming back to say I would like a traffic impact study that's included in the rec center.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. All right.
Typical of all our development, so we'd be no different for a tower project. We would be, you know, looking at a traffic study at that point.
Right. Okay, great. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
What's the length? Like, how much time they get awarded today? They start when? And what's the duration of time that the, they'll be evaluating traffic?
They will be evaluating traffic over the next three weeks. When they have to obviously get started and everything.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay. I just didn't know if there was a, you know, if this is three months, six months, whatever it may be.
We're supposed to be wrapped up in February.
Does this, does this also incorporate, incorporate? You said signage, but probably not on, on the traffic side, anything to do with signage directing, you know, business to Old Town or Old Town's open. That's a completely separate, correct?
That would be a completely separate exercise. There is some green signs, like MUTCD compliance signs that we will probably try to incorporate, but they will be more of the basic nature in this project, and that can be looked to be enhanced in the future.
Okay. Does this, so land needing to be acquired, right? Timneth Parkway, whatever it may be, if the rec center brings extensive amount of folks in that area, does this traffic study also say, okay, well, if we need to add more lanes or whatever it may be, what is associated with the land that's currently there and who, you know, is that part of it as well?
It will take a look at the recommendations. Timneth Parkway is plenty big enough.
Yes, right. That's, yeah, but if, if we need to, I mean, any, for, for example, right? If that's probably going to be the busiest.
They would, they would take a look at the, our, on Fourth Street, Second, and Main Street to determine if any adjustments needed to be made based on the projected land use volume. So they'll look at today and then they'll also look into the future. So some of those future things may or may not happen, but it is good to still have those triggers to kind of know what's coming.
What-ifs, yeah.
Yeah, those what-ifs, because even if it's not that development, it may be another one. So looking at that land use from a really high level.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can you remind me, when was our last transportation study wide, our transportation study for like, townwide for Timneth? Do you remember when that was?
That was approved in February of twenty-twenty-four. This is, although it is called a plan, this is a lot more specific. This is more of an operational, like, get into the details and guide, like, hey, put a crosswalk here, let's stripe this out, look at, you know, advisory bike lanes, like, this is, this is a lot more fast to implementation. The transportation master plan stays pretty high level, guiding more development level.
So not a master plan?
This is not a master plan. This is an implementation plan. Let's call it that.
Thank you, thank you. That's, because I was thinking, like, in that other plan, there was a much more, like, touch points, right, like, feedback. So with the stakeholders in this process that you kind of mentioned, how will you get in touch with those stakeholders, like the businesses, get that feedback? What is, what is the plan for getting all the feedback from? Because I know Old Town residents are, are very engaged, so can you kind of walk me through how that'll work?
Sure. So we have two different outreach phases. We're assuming different types of meetings. We kind of wanted to separate it. We want to meet in Old Town with the res, we obviously want to meet with the Main Street Committee. We want to meet with Main Street Businesses. I do still need to dive into the details specifically about when that's going to be, where, all those sorts of things. We also want to specifically meet with town staff, of course, to get their input, the Timneth Elementary, to see how things are going from their side, and then residents in the neighborhoods to see how that kind of shift in traffic is going to work. So we'll stage a series of meetings. So we're going to collect our data first. We will make some general recommendations, go out to the public, get their feedback, and then go back to our desks and work on it, and then come back out to kind of present, like, further updates to provide that.
Great, great. And then will, will this come back to us eventually, so we get an update on it as well? Or does it just go implementation after, after you guys do it? Because I, I'm, this is interesting, because we've got a lot of emails about everything that's happening, so I'm very vested in it. So I just didn't know, maybe we can get an update after you?
Of course.
Okay.
I mean, or I can go implement, but yeah, I can always come back.
No, no, whatever you guys decide. I, I just want to see how the project turns out.
And you guys are obviously invited to come out to those meetings as well and everything like that, but we, maybe we can provide a update in a manner.
Yeah, just how it turns out, because it's, obviously, everything going on down there is very interesting.
Especially the bigger projects. Those will have to come back. We'll have to program those into the capital improvement program.
Absolutely.
You'll see those, but like, signing and striping type stuff, that's more administrative and lower cost type items, but so there would be some items.
Yeah, I guess I'm less concerned about the budget, but I'd like to see how this project turns out with Old Town, because there's a lot going on and it's very exciting down there, so. Yeah. Thank you.
I do, I do agree with, I mean, I wouldn't have thought of that, but like, I agree with when we do our council chats and questions, just actually having that knowledge and, you know, data points to speak on is, would be super helpful, so, yeah, I agree with that.
Could you pull up the map, kind of outline the scope of this? I guess my question relates to connectivity, mainly to the Pooter Trail. But I'm just curious, is this scope able to look at that? Because my sense is that we, we have a temporary solution in place there, but...
For the Pooter Trail connecting, like, across Main Street and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
That is not included in this scope. The post-master plan actually did a good job of outlining some options from a high level as, you know, development continues to kind of grow and stuff like that. If we did want to look into something to try to make that connection, that'd probably be a standalone type of project. But I know Tom can probably provide some more information on that at a future date, but we really, we were trying to focus on bringing people, I guess, more from that eastern side into, like, you know, across Timneth Parkway and into that Old Town area. It was kind of more of our core focus rather than looking beyond that.
Yeah, maybe that's something we have on the radar. I mean, should, should the rec center pass? And just generally, Old Town, I, I think looking at ways that we can increase the accessibility from the Pooter Trail
Yes.
would be important. Counsel, any other questions? And is there a motion to approve a resolution approving the work order with Wilson Company Incorporated Engineers and Architects for the Old Town Transportation Plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think it makes sense to have, have data so that you can plan accordingly, and I also like the fact that it's projecting out. So as the town grows, as the traffic increases, you kind of have a plan already in place on how to deal with that. So, makes sense to me.
I'm, I'm definitely going to be voting in support of this. Obviously, the Parkway is at a significant impact in our traffic pattern, so I think it's worth getting back in there and, and studying it again. So I'll be in support of it.
Councilmember Holt? Yeah, I mean, this area, since the Parkway has come in, just kind of the flow of everything down there has, has changed, and, and certainly, I, I hope for the better. We've received a lot of positive feedback, but I think this is a great time to be asking this question, and so I, I support it. All right, all those in favor of the resolution approving the work order with Wilson and Company Incorporated signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Passes four zero. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our public hearing items. We have two this evening. They're related. For each of these items, we'll have a staff presentation followed by an applicant presentation. At that point, I will ask if there is any public comment. People may speak on each agenda item if they wish. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. After public comment, be an opportunity for counsel to ask questions of staff or the applicant, and then we will consider a motion. Let me ask you, Mr. Kemper, is our intent to do one presentation or two?
I was going to do one, but I can certainly split this up. The slides are as such, to where we could do these as two separate items.
You know, I'm, I'm fine doing them as one, and then we can just incorporate the presentation into, into both items. But I will take public comments separately on, on each item. So with that, I'll, I'll formally call ordinance, item seven A, ordinance number fourteen, series twenty-twenty-five, ordinance approving the annexation of the property known as Timneth Shores.
Good evening, counsel. An annexation petition was submitted to the town of Timneth by Cottonwood Development Partners LLC. No worries. Again, the petitioner, Cottonwood Development Partners LLC, is the sole owner of the property referred to as Timneth Shores. They are requesting annexation into the town's limits. And some of this is kind of rehashing what we discussed at our last meeting, but I'd just like to kind of go over a few of these things for the record, beginning with an overview of the process and timeline for this request. So as you see on the top of your screen, the annexation of rezoning items are the first steps within the town's development process. However, property owners may also request a comprehensive plan amendment prior to annexation to assess either the flexibility or viability on their end of the proposal for that property as these designations apply to the town's entire GMA of the town. So that's why you'll see that ORE up there, which was what happened in this instance for this property. A comprehensive plan amendment did occur prior to the annexation. After annexation, a property must undergo the subdivision process to obtain those entitlements, so that would include the major subdivision process, sketch plan, preliminary plat, and final plat. Some significant dates for this item, on the eighth of July, an initiation resolution was adopted, formally accepting the annexation petition and confirming its compliance to state law, and then therefore commencing the annexation process. At the August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, the planning commission held the required public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff has reviewed the application in accordance with the State of Colorado's Municipal Action Annexation Act and found it to be compliant with the state's requirements for eligibility. Per the State of Colorado's Municipal Annexation Act, there are three ways in which an annexation can occur. This application is being met by the landowner petition signed by more than fifty percent of the landowners who own more than fifty percent of the land. The total perimeter of the area meets the statutory one-sixth contiguity requirement, meaning at least one-sixth of the boundary is contiguous with the town's existing limits. With the inclusion of County Road forty-two E, which you see on the screen, the subject property comprises approximately eighty-one acres and has a total perimeter of thirteen thousand eighty-two feet. Of this, three thousand four hundred feet are contiguous with the town's limits, representing twenty-six percent of the total perimeter, exceeding the one-sixth or sixteen percent contiguity requirement mandated by state law. When a property is annexed by the municipality, adjacent roads or right-of-way necessary to provide access to that property may also be included in the annexation. So as I previously mentioned, an additional five acres of County Road right-of-way are proposed for the annexation, ensuring access to the property. That includes the adjacent portion of County Road thirty-two E, which is not labeled as to, immediately to the west of this property, and County Road forty-two E from Main Street, being annexed, again, at the request of Laramie County, per our IGA. In accordance with Colorado law, any portion of platted street or alley is annexed, again, that the entire width is being annexed. It is important to note that the Annexation Act does state that "Conseguity shall not be affected by the existence of a lake, reservoir, stream, or other natural or artificial waterway between the annexing municipality and the land proposed to be annexed." The public comment was submitted to, at the Planning Commission meeting on August nineteenth, which was included in your packet. I, I am prepared to answer any questions or concerns you have related to that item. We also have also received another public comment that will likely be touched on during this meeting. Open to answer those, any questions to that. So with that finding, that a complete application was submitted and reviewed in accordance with the Town of Timneth Regulations outlined in section sixteen-ten-two in the Colorado revised statute, staff recommends approval of ordinance number fourteen for annexing the property known as Timneth Shores. So with that, the property owner has submitted a zoning map amendment request concurrent with the annexation application to establish the initial zoning designations within the town. As you, some of you may recall, last year, the owner submitted an amendment to the future land use designation map of the comprehensive plan for this property, which requested roughly fifty-one acres of the be amended to allow for the designation of low-density residential, which is represented on the screen to your left. This application or request was approved by a resolution adopted by Town Council in September of twenty-twenty-four. So with that, the applicant is proposing fifty-one acres be zoned single-family residential and twenty-four acres zoned as a state residential complying with that future land use map found within the comprehensive plan. This application was reviewed against the criteria for amendments to the Timneth zoning map and determined that criterion, our criterion G is what applied for this specific application, being that to bring zoning of land into conformance with the future land use designations of the comprehensive plan. So the subject property is currently designated as rural residential and low-density residential. The annexing, proposing to have the zoning districts of RE and R-two are in conformance with that adopted future land use designation. At the August nineteenth meeting, planning commission held a required public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval. So staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment for the Timneth Shores property with the following condition: to allow staff to work with the owner-applicant to address any minor modifications prior to final signatures. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant team if they have anything to add.
Hello, my name is Jim Righeimer, and I know some of you. I was, I am the developer for Kitchell, for Kitchell Lake. Kitchell Lake was, you know, a broken project that we took over, believe it or not, eight years ago. My daughter was going into high school as a freshman. She's graduating this year from, from Colorado State in construction management. She figured it out. That's what dad does. Anyways, you know, we, we did a lot of work with the town. We worked with a lot of previous staff and with new staff, so we're really kind of happy to be here. In the Kitchell Lake project, we did that in two phases. The last phase is down to the last fifty lots, and obviously, the builders want to work with us to do the same kind of quality of project where, you know, obviously, on the, the lake itself, it's going to be more like Wildwing. We have the larger homes around the lake, but nobody really wants to have cookie cutter houses. They want to have a little bit more substantial house inside there, and that's what the builders have been doing over in Kitchell Lake. And so they're excited to get over there, and we're excited just to move on with it. It'll, it'll take a while to get through it. There'll be a lot of bumps and bruises along the way, but we'll work... It'll, it'll take a while to get through it. There'll be a lot of bumps and bruises along the way, but we'll work with everybody to get there. We've got some of our neighbors, only the two are here. We have another neighbor who was at the, the meeting. I haven't, I met with him for coffee already about a month and a half ago. I'll be meeting him again to do it. But they have the, the nice big lots at the very top, and they have the views out to the, they're nice, out to the mountains. So anyways, I'll let the smart guy do all the talking from this point. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Ken Merritt with JR Planners, Engineers, and Landscape Architects. As always, the completeness of Chad's project introduction always leaves me to be somewhat redundant. But nevertheless, that's what I'm, will end up being, I'm sure. Okay? We're not, we're not moving. Do you, do you mind? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. By way of just a little more orientation for the remainder of this presentation, north will be at the top of your screens. The Timneth Shores property is shown outlined in red. It lies at the northwest corner of Timneth Reservoir. It's about a half a mile east of County Road, the intersection of County Road forty-two E and County Road five, and about a quarter mile west of the Wildwing Development, and where Wildwing currently terminates to the east. As, just as a further reminder, about a year ago, September of twenty-four, we processed a comprehensive master plan, future land use map amendment that proposed to retain twenty-five acres of the seventy-six acres of the Timneth Shore property as rural residential. This portion of property is in direct contact with the Timneth Reservoir shoreline and shares about three thousand lineal feet of shoreline of Timneth Reservoir. And we amended approximately fifty-one acres to be designated LDR, low-density residential, which is compatible with the surrounding, nearly nine hundred and fifty acres of surrounding either R two zone, currently R two zone property, or designated LDR property on the town's future land use map that exists, shown in yellow.
And Ken, that was previously rural residential, is that right?
I'm sorry.
When we amended the comp, was that originally rural residential?
Yes. The fifty-one, thank you for that clarification. The fifty-one acres was amended from rural residential to LDR, low-density residential, which we felt, and I believe council felt unanimously, was compatible with the nearly nine hundred and fifty acres of either R two zone property or currently LDR designated property in close proximity. Taking a little closer look, I want to point out the property is zoned, the property is identified in, surrounded by that red dashed line. Additionally, and we'll talk about this in greater detail, we're also annexing the existing right-of-way of County Road forty-two E and the existing right-of-way of County Road three E. The contiguous for the development is actually provided primarily from the Wildwing Development. The western boundary of the Wildwing Development is projected across Timneth Reservoir, providing us approximately thirty-four hundred lineal feet of contiguous to the town of Timneth. And that's a very important characteristic or requirement of annexation, obviously. There is a little bit of contiguous provided with the annexation of County Road forty-two E as it butts County Road five. That seventy-foot of right-of-way butts up against County Road five and provides us another seventy feet of contiguous as well. Taking a look specifically at the annexation, we're annexing actually more than just the Timneth Shores property. The total annexation area is eighty-one point two acres of land to be annexed. Seventy-six acres is the Timneth Shores property, and about five point two acres is the right-of-way, existing right-of-way that currently exists for County Road forty-two and County Road three E, which is shown in that bright bold pink line. I'll point out that actually right-of-way by, by process here in the town does not get zoned. So the right-of-way, although it's being annexed, it will not, it is not being zoned accordingly. The annexation contiguous is an important factor in any annexation. The way we calculate contiguous is we take the total perimeter boundary of the subject annexation, which in this case is both the boundary of the Timneth Shores property, as well as the boundary of the proposed right-of-way annexation. That, that is approximately thirteen thousand eighty-two lineal feet. In order to meet the statutory requirements of one-sixth contiguous as a minimum, we need approximately two thousand ninety-three lineal feet or sixteen percent of the total area. And the actual contiguous provided by this development greatly exceeds that at thirty-four hundred lineal feet or twenty-six percent of the total perimeter boundary. I want, I do want to point out that County Road forty-two to the south, shown in yellow, and a small area, that sort of light pink area, just south of County Road three, we're not annexing that because we're not, we don't, at this point, we don't believe we are required to have two points of access. We'll be using, we'll be using County Road forty-two E as secondary emergency vehicle access at some future date when we begin to process the sketch plan and the preliminary plat. Taking a look now at the actual zoning of the property, it's important that we zone property compliant with the future land use master plan. So the twenty-five acres shown in, in that sort of brown, tan brown color is being zoned RE, estate residential, which is, which comports well with the rural residential land use designation. The estate residential zone district provides for a maximum of one dwelling unit per acre. And the area shown in yellow, approximately fifty-one acres of property is being zoned R two, single-family residential, which lines up well with the current low-density residential requirement of the land use designation. And that R two density provides for a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. And once again, we're not zoning the, the right-of-way shown in pink. Finally, I'd like to just sort of punctuate five key points of this annexation. Timneth Shore meets all the town's criteria for annexation and zoning. The annexation and zoning is consistent with the applicable goals, objectives, and policies of the Timneth Comprehensive Master Plan and Future Land Use Plan. The proposed annexation is located in the Timneth Growth Management Area and is greater than one-sixth contiguous to the town's existing municipal boundary, therefore making it eligible for annexation. Number three, the annexation adheres to the requirements of the Timneth and Limerick County IGA intergovernmental agreement for property to be considered for annexation. And finally, the zoning comports with the town's future land use plan, twenty-five acres being zoned RE, which is consistent with the land use plan, and fifty-one acres being zoned R two, again, consistent with the land use plan. And although the first four are statements of fact, number five is perhaps more of an editorial comment on our part, and that is, we believe that there's extraordinary public benefit provided to the town with this annexation based on the development of critical water and infrastructure, water sewer and infrastructure, and roadway improvements that'll be made with the Timneth Shores development, which will generate future opportunities for continued growth in this quadrant of the town. That concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Merritt. And I think what I'm going to do at this point is take our public comment, and then we'll circle back on, on questions there. So I have one individual signed up this evening, Dan Griffith. Sir, welcome. Let me ask you, would you like to speak on both items? Or are you able to kind of address everything in one? I, I just want to plan. Either answer is fine.
I guess my response would be based on what happens in between. If there's another opportunity for the developer to present and rebut anything, then I would want a second opportunity as well.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't you, in prioritizing your comments, first speak on seven A, which is the proposed annexation itself? You have three minutes on that, and then when we get to seven B, if you'd like to talk about this, the zoning, then we can talk about that.
That's perfect. That's how I'm prepared, so.
Thanks, sir. And we have received your, your letter, and I appreciate you providing that to us in advance.
Hope to elaborate a little bit for you. Dan Griffith lived twenty-three seventeen, South County Road three, directly adjacent to the proposed property development. I have said all along that I am not opposed to the proposed project, but I want my voice heard. I've been told by the developers that they want to work with us to address our concerns, and yet no action has been taken in the last fifteen months. I have not been contacted since the comp plan amendment was approved. Prior to that, the developer was engaged, stopped by my office multiple times. Nothing has been done to address my concerns. During the comp plan amendment, council stated that there was a need to be, for flexibility, or this area may never be developed. There was, there has been no mention of when development would begin. Fisher and Willis Farms are good examples of projects approved long ago that have not started. I know they have their own challenges. What are the challenges that Timneth Shores has that we don't know about yet? Is Timneth Shores the next project that is proved as a catalyst that never starts? Is important, it's not important to me when it starts. I just don't believe it's appropriate to use the linchpin theory of approving this project, assuming that everything else is based on this one project. In the comp plan approval, the only thing that was guaranteed, per council's own word, was that this property would no longer be farming. That was verbatim. During the October twenty-four council meeting, it was suggested that many of my questions were most likely directed at the developer and not at the staff. And I was told plans are at a high level and requiring more detail unfairly burdens the developer for something that may not be approved. The main concern I have about this project is a high-level item and should be resolved before approval. The R two zoning is the main concern, and it's connected to the annexation. I'll explain that more when we get to that, to item seven B. The developer has not resolved or even addressed the concerns that I have presented since the original June twenty twenty-four neighborhood meeting. Only my wife and I attended that one. I understand at some point, my questions are going to be presented at the correct phase and may be addressed in a future step of the development. My challenges are all based on a need to understand how this impacts my property. My concern with unanswered questions is that when we get to the appropriate stage for, for the, that the opinion will be that the developer has invested too much to make changes, and why didn't I bring these things up earlier? I'm asking council to help by not approving the annexation until neighbor's basics concerns can be met. I also would like to, to challenge the continuity calculation. This is two separate parcels. There's a shared boundary between the two of them that was not included in that total boundary. I don't know the answer. If that joining line is calculated into that calculation, does it still meet the percentage requirement? Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Griffith. There's nobody else signed up to speak on seven A, but I see someone is present, so sir, I'll invite you to the podium. And this will be speaking on seven A, which is the annexation as opposed to the zoning. If you please state your name and address, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yep. Ryan Furtig, I own the property, two-two-two-five South County Road three E, just up from Dan. We've spoken several times on this. I have some of the same concerns as Dan. You know, when we bought this property, obviously, we knew it would be developed, assumed it'd be one-acre lots. No issue with that. Development is progress to some extent, but I'm pretty disappointed at, at, at the process by which decisions seem to be being made here. If I go back through the beginning, I think just to kind of characterize why we're doing this, it's the density increase is required to develop that parcel to bring water. And the town wants to also develop the edge of the reservoir. And, you know, I think what that misses, number one, I don't think that's true. If you want a sidewalk around the reservoir, there's lots of ways to do that as a town. If you want to, you know, recreate around there, there's lots of ways to do that without giving away really one of the prime jewels of, of the town of Timneth. You know, the other piece, water being expensive to get there, certainly, but that area is surrounded by development. People waiting in the wings. I have to believe there's a collaborative way that that could be done. It just feels like there's, not false pretense, but, but the reasons for which we're doing this, I think, are misplaced. And, and I just want the question to be asked. Is annexing this, which sort of solidifies the zoning and, and moves this process to the next irreversible phase, is that actually best for the town of Timneth? There was an article in the Wall Street Journal about a, a neighborhood in Denver, and it was so unique because it was so hard to find space. And I just keep shaking my head, thinking, does the town of Timneth really need another postage stamp development on our, on our prime land? If for whatever reason, you know, you decide that, which is your purview as our elected officials, if you decide that it is in the best interests of the town, which you're under no obligation to do so, I think there are things to consider and certainly conditions to put on it. Number one, annexations aren't to burden residents. As I was driving to and from work today, I noticed Harmony was backed up on the exit ramp past Floor and Decor. As I passed Prospect, it was backed up. You couldn't even get on. And the winner today was Mulberry, which was bumper-to-bumper at a crawl. And why does that happen? It's because somewhere along the way, the vision isn't complete for the impacts that are going in. I like Chick-fil-A as well as the next guy. I don't know if it was Chick-fil-A or Costco or what, but there was a bridge problem and a parking problem, and I don't want that to happen here. So if it is to move forward, traffic impacts, this is a three-hundred percent increase. Traffic impacts should be evaluated up and down County Road five through forty-two E, onto Prospect, through that interchange. Otherwise, the burden just gets passed down the way. I think last time we mentioned we were happy about funding for the bridge widening at Harmony. That should have been before.
Thanks. Can I get you a wrap-up?
Yeah. I guess the other condition is just to think about traffic. You know, the, the assumption is County Road forty-two will be only used for a secondary entrance. Developer one-on-one is to promise that, and then the next development uses it as, as permanent. So requiring that that never be changed. The zoning map needs to be updated. The transition is incorrect, right? You go low-density, high-density, low, low-density. County Road three, be preferable if that was not used as a primary drive, just handle it within a loop in the development. And obviously, I'd prefer no entrances next to those houses on, on County Road three, which is doable. But again, I feel like this is the time to make those requests as a town. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else present that would like to speak on the annexation issue? Sorry. Do you want to speak, Dan? Nope. Couldn't tell. No?
No.
Okay. Very good. All right. If there's no more public comment, then we'll move on to questions. What I'd ask is, council, let's first address general questions and then annexation-specific questions, and then when we call the zoning, we can address them at that time. You want to kick us off?
Yeah. So I guess maybe a general question is, you know, what, what is the ultimate plan for the estate aspect and the R two aspect? I mean, I'm not far off in, in disagreeing with the fact that there's farmland, peaceful farmland, and R two could be another Timneth Lakes. It could be something completely different. So what, what is the vision for that area?
Thanks for the question. I appreciate it. The, the estate residential area on the eastern boundary, southern boundary of the property will essentially meet the requirements for estate residential in that the minimum lot size would be a half acre, and the minimum frontage would be a hundred and forty feet of frontage at the building setback line. Likely, there'll be slightly larger Likely, they'll be slightly larger than a half acre in size. There'll also be a significant natural habitat buffer along the lake edge, a minimum of fifty-foot of buffer along the, along, as, as measured from our property line into our property, fifty feet. Is there, can I have a clicker? Sorry. I apologize.
Excuse me.
You may have to do your magic again. There we go. Along the boundary of the lake, the entire lake edge, it'll be a fifty-foot natural habitat buffer that'll be used as open space. I think the gentleman earlier mentioned the, the, the extension of the Timneth Regional Trail, ten-foot Regional Trail. That is actually on the reservoir property, not on our property, but will butt up against that. The remainder of the property, fifty-one acres, will comport with the, the allowances of the R-two zone district in that the density will be four units, probably less than four units per acre. We don't know exactly how much less, but probably somewhere between maybe three and a quarter to three and a half units per acre on the site.
I, I want to interrupt you. I just want to touch on that. So the natural buffer area, explain that to me.
Yes, so the natural, so the natural buffer area around the lake, the, the lake is a valuable natural resource for the town. We want to make sure that we don't put property lines, the rear property lines, and people having full access to the lake without there being some natural habitat buffer. So that'll be landscaped in sort of a natural habitat manner, using native trees and grass species.
Similar to Kitchell Lake?
Like similar to Kitchell Lake, exactly.
So unusable?
Well, unusable, but visibly usable, visually usable, but also usable from the standpoint of, we want to get people to a viewing area to view the, the wildlife that, that habitats in the lake area. And, and so we would, in fact, provide some limited access to the lake edge. But it will be on our property.
Yeah, you're hitting it right on the head. When we looked at, we did another project that had a lake, then we did Kitchell Lake, and what we found was that when you allowed people to have their property lines go to the lake, they end up kind of fencing it and putting all kinds of stuff into it. And as much as everybody wants to own something on the lake, to put the fifty-foot buffer in, we put a trail around it, everybody gets to use it. And in the end, the homeowner who thought they wanted to really be on the lake really doesn't have to be. They have a gate to go out to it.
So here's, here's my, here's my, and I can, I'm only speaking from experience, right? So I'm a Kitchell Lake resident. I bought a million-dollar home. Got a nice discount on it, so that was nice. But we bought on a green belt with the proposed natural space for use, and it's unusable. So my concern is the cost savings to put natural grass and non-potable water that never gets watered. And for areas that are meant for community, and it's ultimately completely dead grass and weeds, and unusable by, it completely eliminates it. And then you have folks that have farmland that have been here forever that were promised buffers of landscape, which anyone that drives down Prospect Road and sees that there is no buffer between Prospect Road and any of the homes in Kitchell Lake. There's also no buffer between any of the homes.
Say that one more time. I'm sorry, I lost you. There's no, there's no.
There's, there's no buffer between, like, even the homes in the, in the natural area, because as of now, I mean, and it's been developed for two years, that central area. There's, the grass just doesn't, it just seems like a lack of response to keeping it up, right? And if you're talking residential, you're talking multi-million dollar homes, you're talking property owners that have been there. It's a beautiful area, right? It is, it is a jewel, and people are spending good money. And if you look in Saratoga, which is, I mean, kudos, and I've given you kudos before to that, that neighborhood, it's very well manicured with grass and very large trees. And the, the most recent neighborhoods lack that. And if this is going to be another one of them in a jewel area, and that's the buffer between residents, and we're missing the mark big time, and it just, to me, it doesn't seem like it's worth the annexation if that's the case. So how do we assure that if it's annexed, that that gets done?
You're bringing up an extremely good point and a point that you were on the previous, you were on the council when it got approved, the project got approved, but we came in on a broken project. Was anybody on the council? Back when, okay. So it was a broken project. We took over the project in here. Is very contentious in the community about how many houses could be put in. Understand, the people that were in filing one, it was called Saratoga Falls at the time, in filing one, it was all custom homes. And so there was like ninety lots, thirty, sixty of them were sold, thirty of them had houses. The economy crashed. Everybody freaked out. They were concerned about cookie-cutter houses being put in and all sorts of things being done. What, when we came into it, we said flat-out that we needed a certain number of houses to pay for all the costs to do this and to take care of everything. And I would, you know, wasn't this room here, well, no, it wasn't this room. It was the other one, I guess. Anyways, we had this room packed with people from filing one saying, here's your limit number, two-hundred-and-fifty houses and two-hundred-and-fifty houses. I said at that time, to take care of this property with two-hundred-and-fifty houses, it can't be done. Not only are you taking houses out, and that's all green grass, which looks fantastic. Those were supposed to be houses that would be paying a fee, you know, to pay for it. They're being taken out and being divided up. So when we go to this one over here, I think the, the council will understand more. We're looking to have more like we have in filing three, which is the, the last filing that's being built out now, where there'll be some more open spaces. But between the two projects, we had, you know, litigation over, if you remember, there was a ditch that we had to underground that went on forever. And so those things really didn't get taken care of like they should have been taken care of. Now, it's not all done, but there's no doubt, and I said it here, you go ahead and knock it down from like, you know, eight-hundred houses to five-hundred, how are you going to pay for all this stuff? All that green grass is beautiful, but how is it going to be done? This project that we're going to go to will have more open space than normal projects have, but nothing like Kitchell Lake has. So that's the good and the bad. People love all the open space, and I go, costs a lot of money to take care of.
And again, that would be my concern if we're, if we're talking high-end homes, open spaces. Right? I mean, the vision of that would be well-manicured, well-landscaped, especially the buffer in between. And if that, if that buffer and if the cost could take years and years and years to fulfill the, at what cost to the current residents and the current homeowners, at what point do they have to wait for the, those to be filled, for the buffer to be actually put in?
Well, it, it wouldn't be because it'd all be done at one time. And not, we're not going to have a situation like we had there where we had the first filing done, went through litigation, you know, you know, one and a half million dollars in litigation. Finally, we're able to put the, the pipe underground, and then we could get to the next part of the project. So it's been, it's been a problem.
So is it safe to say that if, if annexed and if approved, the buffering, the, the, the lines before?
Will be done first. Will be done, yeah.
Will be first before?
Yeah, yeah. It's easy. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Holt, let me just add to that a little bit, if you don't mind. You're familiar with all the work we've done at the Harmony Development, Harmony Club Development. All that natural area, areas that we have, we irrigate those. We, we get a, and we get, we specialize in selecting plant material that will work in, in our arid climate. We select grass species and based on soil types and, and hydrology and the like. We also require that all our natural habitat buffer is, is irrigated for a period of two years or until adequately established, but a minimum of two years. So if you take a look at the work we've done at Harmony, I think you'll see that this boundary of fifty-foot of this habitat buffer is important in order to maintain the wildlife that is living along the lake edge, both the aquatic wildlife, the plant flora and fauna, as well as the small mammals that live there. So as Jim pointed out, it'll be done with the infrastructure of the development, because it's not on the individual lots. It'll be outside the lots in a separate tract of land.
One more point, not to, not to beat it. The fact that discussed earlier, the water and the cost of water, right? So pot or non-pot, whatever it may be, that's also, I mean, that's a, a current issue, sometimes out of your control, right, in, in Kitchell with, with the non-pot system and it going down on a regular basis and it causing, would also be a concern, I want to, you know, make sure it's on the record, of getting the water to that is probably the most costly. What will that process be? And the, the certainty that it won't break on an ongoing basis to cause the lack of, of, you know, of, of ability to even water the property?
Well, well, this site, go ahead, Jim.
Well, you're hitting it in. There's a water, there's a building with all the pumps. There's four pumps in it that were put in when the first filing was done. We took that over. There was never any kind of like, you know, the company went bankrupt before. So there was no one ever to hand over everything, and we have gone in and taken care of all the items in there. And as the developer, we didn't give it to the Metro District, even though it should be their cost. We continue to put capital into the new pumps and everything else to go into that, that pool house. But that was built with the previous developer on there.
You're more saying because you can control it from the beginning, you'll avoid the issues that would cause bankruptcy or whatever it was.
Well, we, yeah, exactly. We, and other project we've, that we've done in, in Colorado throughout, in Northern Front Range, we don't have this problem. Taking over a broken project's hard. And so one of the biggest issues, are you talking about the land between filing two and filing three?
Yeah, I mean.
So that, that, so understand.
I can give my address out for everyone, but yes, I mean.
No, no, no. Okay, so then you're hitting, this is easy to explain. The previous property had a ditch run through it, and the ditch was raised, and the water was coming in. We built filing two, which backed up to it, that had trees and everything else put into that area. Finally got through litigation, were able to underground it, and had to take all those trees and all that, that landscape and stuff out. So we had to go back in there now. In fact, it's just like right now, literally. In fact, staff, we've been working with staff and Chad going out, was it, no, it was, what's her name? Out the property to go over the last tree. So we had to go replant filing two, you know, that backs up to those houses, because we had to, we had to go in there and tear that out later after, you know, people had already moved into their house.
Just, just more clarification on this project, since it is from start, complications that have happened in other projects in very near area to avoid.
Broken projects are tough.
I, I think it's important to point out that it is unlikely that this project would be a non-pot system. Elko Water District is the water supplier for this property. Likely, it'll be irrigation, the irrigation will be provided through domestic water at a, at a, at an irrigation cost. So there's a little bit of a difference there. And there is adequate water. They have affirmatively supported the development of this. They have capacity in their system, both Elko and Box Elder, to, to actually service this property. That doesn't mean we have lines to plug into. We'll have to build a great deal of the infrastructure on this site. But, but they have the availability in their system to service the property. I, I would like to address some of the comments that were made, if that's acceptable to everybody. So the first gentleman pointed out that we hadn't addressed any of the concerns that were brought up in the first neighborhood meeting about a year and a half ago, a year and a quarter ago, June, I believe, of, of twenty-four. I want to point out that this is a multi-step process. The city's code requires five steps in this, in the development review of this project. A comprehensive plan amendment, which we needed to do, which we did a neighborhood meeting for because that was a requirement. And we went through that, that vetting period for the comprehensive master plan through planning commission and town council, and both unanimously approved the comp plan amendment. The annexation and zoning, which is step two of this five-step process, does not require a neighborhood meeting. That's per code. We didn't do a neighborhood meeting. And, and, and as, as such, there was no need to go back to the neighborhood to talk about the annexation and zoning, because the annexation and zoning is a more fact-based process. Do we meet the conundrumity? Is, is the requirement consistent with the comp plan? Is the zoning compatible with the future land use plan? It is truly a fact-based decision. The, it leaves very, for, very little subjective decision-making on this matter. But the next step is the, the sketch plan. And we're going to do the sketch plan separate from the preliminary plot. Now, you can do those together, but we think it's a better process if we do them separately. The sketch plan requires a neighborhood meeting to be done within thirty days of our submittal. And over the next, probably within the next couple, several weeks, next couple of months, we'll be making a sketch plan submittal, and we'll coordinate with city staff to do a neighborhood meeting so that we can begin to address the, the, the physical design of this property. During the comp plan amendment, there was a lot of concerns related to the physical design, but we weren't dealing with the physical design at the comp plan amendment. We were dealing with the legitimacy of, 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 of amending an area of the property from RR to, to, to LDR. The next step after that is the neighborhood, is the preliminary plot. We'll have yet another neighborhood meeting for that, and we'll be able to demonstrate the physical improvements that come with the, the actual preliminary plot. By the way, as you all know, the sketch plan is a bubble diagram. And, and so it shows, so major circulation, open space areas, land use bubbles and the like. So it doesn't really get into all the, all the real physical attributes of the property until we get to preliminary plot, and then finally, we'll do the final plot. So by the end of this project, if you're not already tired, tired of me from all my other projects, you will be simply with this project, because I will be back here another, at least three more times to see you, if not more. So we will do a neighborhood meeting. We'll begin to address those key issues that came out of the first neighborhood meeting that were more physical issues regarding access, roadway improvements, lighting, ambient light, because we're creating, you know, putting a subdivision in what is a relatively rural area currently right now. So those will be addressed. The second gentleman made a couple of comments regarding the very similar issues, not addressing the concerns that were brought up, and that's simply because we're not there yet. We had to do the comp plan amendment. We have to do this annexation and zoning. And the sketch plan will bring up more issues, but we will have a neighborhood meeting to vet those issues out and hopefully address many of them, recognizing that we can't always address everybody's concerns, but we'll do our best to address the majority of them. There was a comment made, though, that I want to, I want to correct. There was a suggestion that the density of this project's three-hundred times what is permitted. There is no permitted use on this property. Let me explain why. It's zone FA1 in the county. I can't develop this property in the county. Cannot be developed in the county unless you deny the annexation tonight. But you, but the reality is, the annexation meets all the criteria and statutory and city criteria for annexation. So we would hope that we would have your support in that regard. So if this property were to be developed in the county, it would only have seventy-six units, because it's only seventy-six acres, which is three-hundred times more than it would be, three-hundred times less than it would be under the current zoning of, of two-hundred, I think, two-hundred-and-twenty-five or twenty-nine is the maximum number of units that will be on this site. We will not achieve that many units. So it is not three-hundred percent more simply because it can't be developed in the county. And then finally, postage stamp lots. The, the city's criteria for the, for the R-two zone is minimum six-thousand square foot lots, six, fifty-four-foot frontages, I believe. There're going to be lots that are that size, but there's going to be a variety of lot sizes so that we can have some two-car garages, some three-car garages. We have the estate lots that'll be a half acre in size. One of the criteria in the comprehensive master plan is providing development to a broad range of economics of, of people, diverse diversity in the community. And, and this development will offer that. It'll offer estate lots. It'll offer six-thousand square foot lots, likely still move-up related homes. There'll be some larger lots in it. But they're not postage stamp lots. Not everybody could live on a half-acre lot or a one-acre lot or a two-and-a-half acre lot. This is not economically feasible for the masses to live in that fashion. And we believe we're providing a development that will be available to a broad range of economic demographics as well as a diverse living community. So that is my response to those comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Jenkins?
Yeah, so I have questions with regard to access. So. So 42E and a portion of County Road 3E are included in part of this. I, I assume that, that it's going to be a high-quality road consistent with town road standards for the portion that's annexed. Is that correct?
That is correct. It would meet the standards of the criteria or the designation of that roadway.
Right. So then what about, what's the current quality of County Road 42 and the portion of 3E that is not being annexed in terms of that road quality? And the reason I'm asking is, I mean, from a practical point of view, if I had a house there, it would be highly likely that I'd want to go 42, 3E to enter that, that development rather than drive farther north, assuming I was coming from the south. Obviously, if I'm coming from the north, I'd enter on County Road 42E to gain access. So from a practical resident perspective, having both accesses points is important. But I'm also thinking about fire and police access. Fire department is to the south, police department is to the south. Is 42, County Road 42 and that little section of 3E that isn't being accessed, are those going to be quality roads to get fire and police in there in an emergency?
So currently the standards of those roads are not to what the town standards would be should they be annexed into the town and improved. What the applicant is exploring right now is the use of this as a secondary emergency access only, as one of the options to, to meet the requirement of that. Without this being part of the annexation, the town would not be requiring the applicant to, to meet the standards of what the town's roadway would be. There are standards for emergency access to ensure that they can provide a stable service for their vehicles, but it would not be a requirement by the town to improve that road with this, this development.
Yeah, that bothers me a little bit because it, you know, it's 70, 70-some-odd acres of residential property and there's going to be, okay, let's say it's less than 200. There's going to be maybe 600 people that live in that, in that area. And on a daily basis, they're all going to be forced to go down 42E. So you're saying that's emergency access only. You, as a resident, you're not going to be able to enter from the south. I think that's a bad design myself, but.
If I might address that a little bit, so 42E is not included, is, is a secondary access only, emergency vehicle access?
42.
42 rather, 42. And it will be designed to handle 80,000 pound load for a fire truck. So we'll be making improvements to that road in order to meet that standard. In, in addition, we have to build two box culverts, one over the large ditch that feeds, irrigation ditch that feeds the Timneth reservoir and another smaller one that crosses the Westerly ditch. So we'll be making two essentially big bridge improvements on that road as well. That portion of 3E that you see, that's, that is in light pink, that is actually a paved portion of roadway, but it ends at a, at a wood bridge, which by the way has a skull and crossbones on it that says, "Do not cross", which I mistakenly drove my car across one day without seeing that sign. But that, that, that bridge will be, yeah, I'll be glad to be here. That bridge will be replaced with a box culvert of some sort to meet the design requirements of the flow of the, of the Pudle Lake Canal feeder to the Timneth reservoir. But, but as it relates to transportation and traffic impact, we'll be doing with the, with the preliminary plot, a transportation impact report that looks at only one point of access and any congestion created by that. It'll determine whether any further improvements to a, to a full secondary access for the public is necessary. And that'll come at the time of preliminary plot. I do want to point out also that the, that the fire department has already kind of looked at this broadly and said, "Yeah, I think we can make secondary access work." The right-of-way already exists all the way through County Road 42. But if you can see to the, to the right of that yellow line, there's kind of a red area. In fact, I have a better image of it. Let me just, right here. The 42 right-of-way exists in its entirety, but that area shown in red is an exemption to the right-of-way when the right-of-way was dedicated. And the reason for that exemption is because it runs through the homes in several, several outbuildings of the property owner that lives just south of that. Okay, so when they dedicated right-of-way, they dedicated right-of-way through a piece of private property and homes. But when they did that, they put an exemption on it. So that full right-of-way doesn't exist and won't exist until such time that, that, that those physical improvements that currently exist can be modified somehow. I, I will point out that the area, this isn't a good plan, but I'll go one step further.
So to that point, how, how's a fire truck going to get through there if there are buildings? You're saying there are buildings on the right-of-way?
No, there's 60-foot of right-of-way. The southern third, 30 feet, southern half, 30 feet of that right-of-way is, is exempt, has an exemption on it. 30 feet north that you see in purple, that right-of-way exists. And so that's more than adequate for a 20-foot wide emergency vehicle access drive. Now, all your questions and concerns are all very legitimate questions, but they don't have anything to do with the annexation and zoning.
You know, I get that. I, I mean, this also reminds me of the, though it's not commercial, it's residential. It kind of reminds me of the situation we have with Costco, which I'm sure people wish had a different traffic design. We have one entrance in and one entrance out and it continues to be a problem with, with traffic flow there. And yes, there is an emergency access point secondary, which to my knowledge has yet to have to be used. But anyways, it's just the design, the, the access design here from a transportation perspective concerns me. That's all I'm saying.
Can I can just answer that? I'll give you a little step into the future. I've been talking with all the property owners and we had the situation with the Fisher Farm property that needed the easement and Jason, Martin, you know, Martindale had some issues with it. That got worked out. That, you know, it didn't get worked out, but it, it got handled. They, they got what they need to do it. Jason is looking to develop his property. So actually, his property is that whole triangle piece that goes over to 42. So right now, all that's needed is an emergency access and Myrna, who is, who was the one who got it to stop, not, you know, take down her house and there, doesn't want any traffic now. But someday, when she wants to do something or somebody sells her property, her half will be done. But Jason owns on the other side of it also. So where it's 30 feet and 30 feet one part you can't do, on Jason's, you just have another 30 feet you would take when he develops his property out to make it a full, proper street. So it will get there.
I hope so.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, that's the Allison Estate subdivision that you see that was subdivided in the county as 2.25 acre.
That'll never happen.
Lots. And that'll never happen. And so likely that'll be, and it's designated on the future land use plan as LDR as well. So that'll be developed at likely in the R2 zone district, which will foster your, your concern of the development of County Road 42.
So to be clear, right now, it's not, if you had wanted to annex that and create a roadway, it's not possible to do so at this point in time? Because of the restriction of that little, that little section?
And again, like with Jay, I mean, I was with Jason today. He's actually farming the property now for us, cleaned it up very nicely. Gave me a bunch of corn to cook tonight. I'm not going to be able to do that tonight, Jason, sorry. But we've discussed his property and he wants to get towards retirement farming. It's awful tough work. So, you know, the Fisher property's going to go, other property's going to go and it'll, it'll come together, but it will be a little jumpy in between. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think the major takeaway here is that this is a temporary situation that will be resolved through further development. And until this project builds the water and sewer necessary to support its development as well as development of the surrounding property, not a whole lot's going to happen.
I just want to make a clarification because I believe that the applicant has misstated the standard for consideration of an annexation and I want the council to be clear about what the standard is. So the statement was made that annexation is a fact-based process. It leaves very little subjective decision-making on this matter. That's not consistent with Colorado state law. Annexation is a legislative matter. There are minimum requirements that have to be met such as the contiguity. But once those minimum requirements are met, then the council considers whether annexation is in the best interest of the town and exercises its legislative capacity. So it is valid to consider any factors you want when you're considering whether to, whether this annexation is in the best interest of the town in your legislative capacity.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stethel. I was actually going to ask you specifically about the discussion, so appreciate you being proactive there. Mayor Protemp.
Thanks. Chad, I guess, you know, I'm always spatially challenged in my questions. So when we, when we look at this map here and we look at 42E and we look at County Road 3E, in terms of the town, is this kind of our farthest north roads now that will be, Snow will do the plows and maintaining these roads?
So it won't be the farthest north. This is actually south of Prospect, so the Ketchel Lake Saratoga community is our farthest north boundary. But it would be part of the Public Works area to, to maintain as those public, public roads.
Thank you. So that's Prospect. That's what I see on the, thank you. So is that Laramie County then, just north of that?
That is correct.
So that's the Laramie County. So thank you for doing that. So, so they're coming off County Road 5, so that's the high school right over there that's kind of north, or north and west of it. And they're going to come in now with the plows and come down there. And so we'll provide police coverage now with this and they'll come in through there. So it's all immediately after we annex this and this will be part of our town coverage, right? Police coverage services, is that correct?
Yeah, let me answer the Public Works. So we do work with the county. What we do is like on these areas where they're like on the fringe areas, we work with them and do a swap. So if it's an area, we don't want to have to go out like an extra mile or two just to do a little piece of a road, we could do a swap. So that stuff we, we look at after, you know, we annex roads and stuff. So we would assess that. And County Road 42 is a major collector. So that would, would be a primary route. That would be more of a secondary route.
Okay. So, so do you think this will be town or do you think swap? How, how would you look at this road?
Yeah, we probably would work with a swap with them because they're already doing County Road 5 and stuff. So that would just make sense that they would just go in and out, so. But again, that's down in the future.
Totally. I'm just asking the question.
Councilman Wagner, may I just, just point out, 42E will go through the, the Timneth Shores property and likely in the future will connect up with Wildwing Drive as well. So it'll be extended and there'll be a continuous road from Wildwing Drive all the way to County Road 5, through Wildwing, through the property just north of Timneth Reservoir there, through Timneth Shores and then on to County Road 5.
Okay, perfect. So related to your, your, sorry. There we go. Related to your question in terms of who plows it and how's it going to be kept open for access, I presume the same would be true with County Road 42 in the southern part of 3E that's emergency access. That has, if it's going to be emergency access, it has to be plowed.
So 42 will, that road will remain open. There'll be a gate that says, "No access, emergency vehicles only", probably a cattle gate with a, with a chain on it, lock, keeping it locked and a knock box for the fire department to open to go over the ditches on to County Road 3 if they needed to. Hopefully that never has to happen. But County Road 3 will, County Road 42 will remain open. And again, will need to be rebuilt to the extent that it can handle the fire truck load of 80,000 pounds and consequently would need to be plowed, yes.
Sorry. Did you want to say something?
Councilmember Jenkins, I was just going to note that we would have to speak with PFA, Puder Fire Authority to see what their requirements were for access roads. That's not something that I could certainly answer unfortunately, whether that would be their requirement.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if, if there's emergency access and has been a big snowstorm, you got to make sure that the whole emergency access is accessible. So that obviously is something that needs to be worked out. If that's a, a critical component of, of this, it needs to be figured out. So there's proper emergency access.
Sorry. And, and Chad, you said this is Elko Water, E-L-C-O, is that right? And I, I, we have so many service providers here. What other communities have Elko Water? Is this, is this our first community with Elko Water? Is this?
No, so Saratoga, I believe, has majority of Elko. I think that they're adjacent to North Weld as well. But I believe the predominant service provider, or if not all, is Elko within that community. And then other areas, the school, I believe, may be Elko as well. That also would be within their boundary.
And have, have we had any service issues with getting Elko Water or with our communities with Elko Water? Because I haven't, I haven't heard anything, but I was just making sure if we're going to annex any property that we haven't had any things like we've heard with other communities with water, but no tap issues?
Not to my knowledge. So they did review the proposal. It did state sort of the intent to serve, not necessarily the capacity, whether that be sewer or water. But it is within their district and they did acknowledge that it going, if it were to be annexed, they would go through the review process to see what that level was. But not to my knowledge if there's any issues with Elko within the town of Timneth.
No, not that I'm aware of, but a lot of this is at the master planning level. We work, coordinate with them like on our master plans. We tell them what our land uses are. So when they do their master plans for future, you know, how much water they need and for future pipes and stuff, they look at that. So we coordinate with them at that level too.
Okay, okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to talk a little bit about access. So we are annexing 42E and that's because the county is making that request, right?
That is part of it. So the town would require one improved access to a development or a property within the town. It is encouraged from the county that if you are going to take these, they would like to have the full right-of-way of the county road included with that annexation. So they were supportive of having this included.
So I do not see anything specific in the annexation agreement that says must improve 42E to X standard. How do we enforce that? Is there some other, other document that we're relying on there to ensure that in approving this annexation today that we, we ensure that the town doesn't ultimately have to construct that?
Yeah, so that would likely be within the subdivision improvement agreement, which would occur during the plating of the development of the property. So we would put in there what the requirements were or the obligations of that development team in order to actually develop that property. That would be one of them.
So Carolyn, let me ask you, I mean, certainly, I only want to annex this hypothetically. I would only want to annex this if the access issues were resolved. Is there a way that we can require that as a condition of the annexation as opposed to pushing it to something later?
We could. You're, you're approving the annexation agreement at the time you're approving. approving annexation, so if you'd like to add a provision to the annexation agreement, we could do that as an amendment to the motion to add that there would be a requirement to upgrade County Road forty-two E to town standards.
And Mr. Merritt, I mean, what, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I, yes, that would be fine because we've already been directed by city engineering staff, uh, not by, not by Justin, uh, Stone, uh, but when we did our initial, uh, sketch plan submittal, uh, it was brought to our attention that, uh, County Road forty-two E would be brought up to a major, uh, rural, major collector rural standard, so it won't have curb and gutter on it from our western boundary to, to, uh, County Road five, but, uh, and, and that portion of forty-two E, which someday will likely be called Wildwing Drive, will be a full, uh, major collector road with curb gutter and sidewalk, uh, through lanes, bike lanes and the like. And, and, uh, County Road three will be, again, a miter collector with, uh, bike lanes, on-street bike lanes, uh, two eleven-foot through lanes, uh, and on the east side of the road, curb and gutter and, uh, um, tree lawn and, and, uh, and a, uh, six-foot walk, but we're actually proposing at the sketch plan level, an eight-foot walk on that side. So, we've already gotten enough direction for the county and you'll see all that when the sketch plan comes forward, our proposals that, uh, will, will be reviewed by, uh, uh, city planning and, and town planning and, and, uh, engineering for any, uh, further upgrades to that. But you, you're all aware, the forty-two E is a dirt road right now and, and, uh, likely the vertical alignment will not change ver- very much because of the adjacency of development and crossing the various ditches that are there. It'll be somewhat like, uh, Bus Grove is from the roundabout, the new roundabout that exists on Timneth Parkway East, uh, that road, that portion of roadway, um, which is a rural, I think a rural major collector, if I'm correct there, uh, Mr. Stone?
No, I think that's a two-lane arterial. And you're, you're talking about, yeah.
Two-lane arterial, okay. So, I, I, forty-two E is classified as a major collector, um, eighty-foot right-of-way. So, uh, it'll be a sixty-foot right-of-way as a, as a rural collector and then eighty-foot on our property.
And then, uh, Chad, I know I always ask about water adequacy. And I do this because of what happened with recent development, right? We don't currently have a process for Elco to certify that, you know, they're capable of serving this at the proposed level, right?
Well, we do have will serve letters.
Yeah, without the understanding of the full build-out of the development, um, they would need to likely see that number to make sure that it was, um, they did have the capacity for that development. So, at this time, it was just acknowledged that, uh, they can serve this property, but at what extent, they would need to evaluate, uh, through the plating process.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, related to your concern about water, then, um, will water adequacy be matched with their proposal, um, for, uh, number of lots, number of houses, et cetera? At, at that point, you got to make sure that it marries, right? Like if Elco says, we can't, they want to build two hundred houses and they say, we can only supply a hundred and fifty, then you got to make it match, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll just add, my experience working with Elco, we have to deliver water to them. If we deliver the number, the correct number of shares of water to Elco, subject to the number of units we have, they'll service with that amount of water as long as we build the infrastructure. Remember, there, this is not a plug-and-play development. We have to build a lot of water line and a lot of sewer line and a lot of roads. We've talked a lot about water, but I do want to point out, we've worked closely with the, uh, Box Elder Sanitation District as well, which we have a will serve letter. And Box Elder is in need of what they classify as an interceptor line, which is a sewer line greater than, I believe, twenty-one inches in diameter. Uh, and we'll be building a, uh, this, uh, interceptor line from the northeast corner of our property, uh, where forty-two would be extended through the development, that northeast corner. We'll be building on our property, at the low end of the property, uh, a, uh, this interceptor line of either twenty-one or twenty-four inches in diameter. That'll come down our entire southern, eastern boundary, will follow the dash line that you see there in yellow and black, um, and then it will exit out County Road three E, go down County Road forty-two and eventually tie into the sewer line, which, uh, the Fisher Development is to develop from County Road five, uh, to the west, just east of the highway where there is a, uh, a point of connection for the gravity sewer. And, and if that isn't built by Fisher Development, we'll be building it. So, there's a lot of infrastructure that this project will be building and which is, and, and beyond the, the nature of this annexation has been pretty well-vetted at this point to know that we can make all these physical needs happen. So, we're not coming here with a hope and a prayer. We know that we can build a sewer line. We know we can build a water line. We know that we can find enough shares of water to, uh, to dedicate to the district to service this property based on the density of the property, which, once again, off the top of my head, is about at the highest level of one unit breaker and four units breaker would be two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and twenty-nine units. Likely, we won't be building that many units. It'll probably be something less than that.
You can, also on the roads, uh, you had discussed that you would be making improvements on County Road forty-T, forty-two itself, is that right?
The improvements to forty-two will be limited to doing what's necessary to provide adequate pavement design to handle an eighty thousand pound fire truck. That's, that's the fire district's requirement. Whenever a fire lane, which this would be a secondary point of access, has to be designed to handle the capacity of an eighty thousand pound, uh, fire truck. Uh, that's a lot. So, you know, right, right now, um, you know, we don't know whether that's going to be pavement, whether it would be, um, uh, whether it will be recycled asphalt. That'll all sort of vet itself out during the preliminary plat stage when we get definitive information from the fire district. But I believe at the, at the sketch plan level, no, excuse me, at the, uh, at the comp plan amendment level, uh, Marcus with the fire district al- already gave us a lot of information, uh, kind of boilerplate information for what was going to need to be met. Now, when we do a transportation analysis, we may find that from a transportation impact standpoint, improvements to forty-two need to be met, but we haven't done that yet to, to know if that's, if that needs to occur. And, and we have a problem with that in that, uh, uh, we have that exemption on a thirty feet of the sixty-foot right-of-way. So, that's, that's an attribute that we currently don't fully understand yet.
Carolyn, on, on that specific issue, absent that landowner's consent, are there any options to make that road accessible?
Yes, so certainly there's condemnation if it's, if property is needed for public use and the, if they establish a metropolitan district, they would have the ability to use condemnation, subject to approval of the town. The town also has authority for eminent domain, though wouldn't intend to use it for, um, private development purposes. So, those are the two, um, biggest levers, but also of course, just negotiating with the property owner if a, uh, building needs to be moved or a right-of-way needs to be acquired.
All right, council, other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Carolyn, I would be, I think, interested in specific language tied to the annexation regarding both the need to improve forty-two E to a specific standard and forty-two, uh, at least to emergency access standard.
Excellent. So, I don't think you need to come up with the exact language. We can, we can come up with the exact language under the approval authority, but, um, it could be a motion to prove annexation with a revision to the annexation agreement to add that developer would, or owner, um, would have a requirement to, um, upgrade County Road forty-two E to, do, you guys, do we want to put major collector rural sta- do we want to put a standard to say to the standard required by the town for access? And, um, forty-two, County Road forty-two as necessary to meet emergency fire protection access requirements?
I was going to say, um, what was mentioned earlier, it's kind of like, this is where we get into the more detailed, um, specifics. I, I know from experience from thirty years of doing this, sometimes, you know, good intentions to put that requirement at the annexation agreement, but that lives forever. There could be some changes that maybe it doesn't need to be a major collector, it needs to be something else. We are covered by our standards, our Larama County urban area street standards already covers this, that they have to build it, they have to do one roadway, improve to the County Road five. But if you still want that language, we could come back and then, um, come up with some language, um, to be more specific, because I can't answer right now without, you know, having my engineers help me look at the details, because I'm at the bigger policy level at this point, so, uh, but we can work with them and come up with some kind of language if, if you want. And I think that's already in the resolution right that we could clarify. I don't know if that's a stretch on, I guess I'll have to answer, ask Carolyn and say how much we could apply that.
Yeah, I'd rather not have to come back because if you're approving the annexation tonight, I'd like you to also approve the annexation agreement tonight and then it does authorize staff to make minor modifications to that agreement. So, if you can provide the general direction to say, you know, with an indication that County Road four A, for forty-two E needs to be upgraded to town requirements for access and forty-two needs to be upgraded to emergency access standards. If you don't say unless approved in writing otherwise by the town, that would give you the most flexibility if they build a road in between the two or something weird, unexpected happens.
And I would expect that, you know, that language would be a minimum standard, that if some subsequent process, traffic study, whatever, says forty-two needs to be interstate level, that, you know, not, that would.
Yeah, and that was the kind of the thing too, so.
I, I would also.
Could be more, so, yeah.
If you're going to include forty-two, um, in the comments for emergency access, make sure you include the little section of, uh, three E because without that, you don't have access to the property. It's forty-two and a little.
And can I, right now, the limiting factor is the construction of the, the Skull and Crossbone Bridge over, to get you over the culvert.
Right, we'll need to make, uh, forty-two, three is already paved. It probably already is capable of handling eighty thousand pounds, but that would have to be checked through some geotechnical investigation. So, we would be open to forty-two E needs to be, uh, uh, designed, uh, to provide adequate emergency vehicle access, uh, and loading as well as, uh, uh, that portion of three E that is not currently being annexed, including, uh, the box culverts across the two ditches.
Okay, just, you said forty-two E, but you meant forty-two.
Forty-two, I apologize.
And we'll make sure it says, you know, require public improvements include without limitation. We'll make sure that we are clear that this is not a, in, a conclusive list of all public improvement requirements because the majority of them will be identified at the time of the public improvement group. For instance, you know, um, five would also require, so there are other roads that are going to require, um, improvements as well.
All right, council, any more questions on the annexation situations specifically? Okay. At this time, an understanding that, uh, we have an opportunity to discuss after the motion, but at this time, is there a motion, uh, finding that a complete application was submitted and reviewed in accordance with all applicable Timneth regulations, criteria outlined in section sixteen ten-two of the town Timneth Land Code and CRS thirty-one twelve have been ma- met, uh, a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number fourteen for annex for property known as Timneth Shores with the added conditions, uh, that forty-two E, uh, would be built, uh, to current town standards minimally and that forty-two and three E, uh, would be built to, uh, emergency access standards.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
All right, begin discussion with Councilmember Holt.
I think there was a lot discussed there. Uh, I think this is a, um, development that has the opportunity to be a huge success and the annexation in there could be a huge success and it could also be a, a nightmare with everything that you had listed, um, especially when it comes to the water and Fisher and the whole, the whole nine yards. So, um, I mean, I think the, the growth of Timneth is, is inevitable. I think done right, yeah, in this area, I think it is a beautiful area. Could make that area, uh, a beautiful area. I, I am always concerned, uh, with current residents and not putting them out and not making it a burden on them, so, um, obviously as a developer, that's your guys' communication point, but as far as the requirements and, and hitting the button, I think this, uh, this matches that.
Mayor Protemp?
I'm not going to rehash every point, but, uh, you know, I think we thoroughly discussed this this evening and I think, uh, you know, my thoughts on the, looking through the access here is a critical point. I think we addressed those, um, very thoroughly tonight. I, I appreciate the, the staff's feedback on how we're going to get, uh, these roads covered and, um, all of our town services to it, uh, with our partnership with our, um, Larama County, so I will be, um, voting in favor of this.
Councilmember Jenkins?
I've said what I needed to. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So, I will note as we discussed that annexation is discretionary. However, I will also note that we have a comprehensive plan, uh, which a lot of effort has gone into and, and of course, we're about to revise, uh, but it does envision this land being developed as proposed. The vision of the town is not for this to remain farmland forever, but for it to be developed. And so, you know, the consequence of not annexing the land, uh, is that we give up our right to control what's built there. We give up the right to have it built to our standards and, um, you know, they could petition to the county to build under the current zoning, they could petition the county to zone it some other way. We just signed an IGA with the county, which I think, uh, would cause the county to essentially zone it in accordance with our comprehensive plan. So, that the consequence of not doing this, um, I, I think would be harmful to the town and, and the long-term goals. And I agree with Councilmember Holt that, um, this land has a ton of amazing potential. And so, uh, you know, there are concerns related to access, there's always concerns related to water. I hope that we continue to improve our processes, um, to make sure that every development water is addressed early on, not just that somebody will serve it, um, but that, uh, the infrastructure is adequate to serve it when it's built. But I don't think that's this project's, uh, uh, burden to bear. So, you know, as, as long as the, the transportation issues are, are part of this as, as we suggested, I, I think this makes sense. Any other comments? Okay. Then all those in favor of approving the annexation, uh, with the amendments as, uh, discussed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, the annexation is approved. We will now move on to item seven B and discuss the zoning. We have already heard, uh, presentation from staff as well as from the applicant. We'll incorporate that into the record for this item as well. Uh, before I open it back up to public comment, um, staff, anything specifically with respect to, um, the zoning?
Nothing to add other than, uh, it, it matches the.
Uh, nothing to add, other than, uh, it, it matches the, um, intent and approval of that comprehensive plan amendment that occurred last year, uh, which is where the staff was in support of, uh, the zoning that was moving forward.
Thank you. Stringheimer, Mr. Merritt, anything on the zoning specifically? Okay. Uh, then with respect to the zoning, I will open that up to public comment, and I'll invite Mr. Griffith back for, uh, up to three minutes on the zoning issue.
Thank you. Uh, Dan Griffith, twenty-three seventeen, South County Road three E. The proposed zoning plan has been consistent for the last fifteen months, and I've expressed the same concerns about the R-two abutting my home and property of the west of County Road three E. The engineer and developer have not demonstrated that my concern is being heard. I am told to wait till the next phase in the process. The zoning I do not want adjacent to my home will be approved at that point. I'll be at the mercy of the developer to reduce the density or provide buffers. Why not require them to work with us now on this matter? I'm not asking them to change the acreage or percentage that is R-two versus, uh, estate lots. The twenty-five and fifty-one works fine. Why not put some of the estate lots next to our existing properties, provide a, a, a natural transition that you would see in, in well-planned communities? Um, the other thing I have questions on is how does the R-two adjacent to my County Road three property, how would that impact, impact my future ability to develop that property? If in the years to come I decide to develop, will I be required to match the R-two on my property, because that's what is being chose to bring to us, regardless of what we want? The comp plan amendment was approved based on this project bringing additional diversity to the community. How does Timnuth Shores bring additional diversity? The residential or the, the estate lots on the waterfront look very similar to other things I've seen. The R-two look very similar in nature to the other developments of the area. What's, what's unique about this? Uh, conversations earlier have, have talked about the costs and off-site improvements, um, in the meetings, and there's been no mention about the the purchase prices and what's gonna be the typical lot price of this. So I think if you're going to evaluate the cost side of this, you ought to look at the upside too, and that this is a gem of the area, and it is gonna fetch a premium. I, I was glad to hear the developer, um, early in the process, the trail sys- trail system along the lake was mission, mentioned in the early planning commission meetings, and it generated buy-in from that group for this project, and that was not stated correctly. That was a project that was in works, paid for by the town of Timnuth when that comment was made. There's also a comment about, you know, code doesn't require all of these things to be answered at this stage, and that we have neighborhood meetings coming forward, and that's fine. The fact of the matter is that developer and engineers have said they wanna work with us, and they wanna answer our questions, and that's not happening. County Road forty-two, you just noted in your annexation agreement. Uh, this, this road is not county maintained, so it is not currently plowed, it is not currently surfaced. There's no, um, surfaces there, so you're taking all that on as part of this. County Road forty-two E, no sidewalks. When you approach that road standard, you've got a hundred and fifty homes, two hundred homes that may have kids living there, how are they getting to your school system? This is a current issue in other neighborhoods. Uh, land use sixteen point ten point two requires annexation to demonstrate adequacy of service at the time of approval. We're talking about water here. Having a letter says, yeah, we think we can do this, doesn't prove it. Um, this is a burden this project should have to prove. You know, again, I'm asking council for your help by rejecting this rezone. I guess it's not a rezone, it's a zoning, since it's coming in for the first time. You've all stated you want this to be fair for everyone and to have a voice. This is the opportunity to make sure you do that for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up, but is there anyone present who would like to speak on the issue of zoning? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment and turn it over to council for questions on zoning specifically.
Great, Councilmember Holt. Okay, maybe a couple for staff and a couple for, um, developer. Previously, we, as just discussed in great detail on forty-two E, county collector does not require curb and gutter and sidewalk, correct? Okay, um, but if we zone this, um, Mr. Griffin makes a very valid point. Uh, if there's gonna be a hundred plus homes, it'll probably come with double that in children wanting to get to the school that is down the road in both directions. So what is, what does that look like? What is the plan for forty-two E look like to accommodate that large of a, um, population of homes? So I guess I'll throw that, is that, can that be a requirement? Curb and gutter on that road if we zone it R-two?
Um, so as, um, the city attorney or town attorney mentioned, it's discretionary, so, um, those, staff does not have that discretion to add extra. But per the Laramie County Urban Area Street Standards, if you're within, I believe it's a mile and a half of a school, they do have to provide sidewalks, so we would have to look at that. I think they may be outside of that, but other public facilities, but it may be with the high school, so we would, you know, definitely look at that, that may kick in, or they may have to provide some kind of pedestrian access. Part of the collector standards is a bike lane, so the bikes would be provided for. It would just be the pedestrians and sidewalks, that would be a question at this time that we don't know, but again, it's discretionary, so.
So then I'll extend that to, and again, I don't know that this is a burden that they have to adhere to, or maybe a town potential issue moving forward, but if, if the school, meaning the high school, um, is, if we're building sidewalk and accessibility to that, do we then have to make the adjustment on County Road five? Um, cuz once they get to County Road five, there is no sidewalk along that way, if I'm not mistaken. Um, their path to school and accessibility to trails and so on and so forth ends there, so what is the potential future uh, burden on the town for County Road five needing that access at least there? And I mean, I know it's been brought up in good detail the past, needing, wanting bike lanes or whatever it may be on that road, but that's not, I don't think, in the next short timeframe as far as planned.
No, it isn't our radar, it isn't a capital plan, because it's been developed on both sides, so there would be no opportunity for development to kick in. So we do have that in our master plan, and what we've worked with is putting in a fund that could be more flexible, s- cuz we can't predict where developments are. So we're in the budget, you'll see one million dollars for tying into maybe potential developments that we could tie on to. Um, but again, they would be required to do their impact, so first they would have to look at theirs, but there's a potential we could look at something. But that isn't our radar to put, um, bike or sidewalks, um, along that section.
Got it. And again, just, just because we say yes or no tonight, doesn't necessarily mean that that is, gives them the full green go-ahead without having to put the curb and gutter. You guys still get final say on if that road is adequate or not, up to your standards, meets all the, you know, love, all of that, okay? Um, well then, you answered most of my questions for them, so you guys are safe.
All right, Mayor Proton.
As we move forward, what kinda future safeguards do we have as a council and as a staff that, um, that there's, that there's not higher densities that can go in here that are inconsistent with our comp plan? Like, that we won't have something else that comes in here?
So the R-two designation is the highest density within the, uh, LDR, um, future land use designation. So that would require a, uh, request, again, to revise the comprehensive plan to allow for a higher density, medium density residential would be an example. Um, so for the zoning of the property, it can only match whatever the LDR is, uh, per our criteria. As you've seen, there are elements of overlays and things that are discretionary as well by council um, that can shift or change kind of the, the dimensions or, um, uh, how the development, uh, is is, uh, requested by the development team, uh, that vary from the R-two standards. Again, that's a discretionary uh, process that you guys would have, but that would be the only avenue, other than a comprehensive plan change that could ultimately kind of change, um, this development.
And so that would go back, so if there was that kind of large change, that would go back and there would be public hearings, not go back in front of the planning commission, right?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure, well, I know the process, thank you. And so, just thinking about this R-two here, um, can you kinda talk to me about, you know, what kind of neighborhood amenities come with an R-two? Like, can you talk to me, I, I see over there, that's like a Wildwing, right, that's over there, so what kind of neighborhood amenities come with this? Do they have pocket parks? What is that, what kind of amenities come with an R-two?
Yeah, so there will be a requirement of twenty percent, uh, open space within this development. Uh, based on the number of lots that are provided, uh, at Plating, there would be different requirements, there would, ultimately, from the start, there would be a requirement for a pocket park. Uh, but if they exceed a certain number of homes, then it would, uh, trigger a neighborhood park, uh, which is a larger scale amenity within that development. Uh, but to start, um, it would be a half-acre pocket park would be the requirement. Without knowing how many lots are in there, I don't know exactly what that level would be.
So that twenty percent is our standard, right, is?
Correct.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Quick question to add on that. So we talked about it briefly earlier, I know it was a big concern, it's a concern of, of mine. What is the minimum requirement for the buffer between the current homes that are there and the planned, um, building for where the R-two would be?
So our code actually does not require a buffer between R-two and RE or county properties. There is the ability to, um, work those developments in to be, uh, compatible, and we actually do have two provisions in the code that kind of speak to what would be required for that, so it may not be a buffer standard, but there are these provisions, as I'll state now. Um, it is the responsibility of the developer of the higher intensity use, uh, to demonstrate that the uses will be compatible. This can be accomplished through the effective use of shared access, parking, appropriate building or orientation and setbacks, landscaping, architectural treatment, buffer areas and limited use, um, of fencing and screening. Special considerations shall be given to the impact of aesthetics, noise, lighting and traffic. So that is within our code, um, as a requirement um, that we would be looking for and looking at as this, if this were to further develop. Um, so there's not necessarily a buffer yard standard or a minimum that would be required, but there are other items within this that, um, we would be working with the development team to ensure that, that provision would be met.
Okay, question for Carolyn then. Can we set, is council able to set a required buffer zone between current, um, estate, farmland, current properties and building, um, in the R-two? I mean, I'm not remotely excited about there being nothing that specifies a buffer, and there's existing homes for long-term there.
So it would be unusual to include that as a condition of zoning. Um, I have not had experience with that, I don't know if any other staff has, so I think it'd be more appropriate to include that as a condition once we get to sketch plan, um, which does include consideration, as a factor, consideration of the impact on adjacent development. So, um, you can, you know, instruct the developer and staff that that's something you're gonna be looking at with sketch plan, but I think that would be the more appropriate time to review it unless you wanna, you know, zone it lower density, you know, zoning isn't really setback.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it's important to recognize that the eastern boundary of this property, which has now been annexed, um, is, um, and adjacent to the, um, uh, adjacent property owners, there's a road going in there, three E. Uh, three E is going to have gutters and sidewalks on the eastern side of the road. Uh, I heard eight-foot sidewalks there. I presume if you're putting a sidewalk in, those are gonna be front yards, not backyard, no. They're, they're gonna be backyards there. Anyways, my, my, just a second, let me finish. The other side of the road of three E is propos- what I heard is proposed not to have a curb and sidewalk. So in terms of buffering between the properties, that would be the place to have, um, a, some kind of a landscape buffer on the western, uh, side of, uh, the proposed three E road that's going all along the north-south part of that property.
Yeah, um, I know we didn't, we're not here at this point yet, but we've actually put together a bubble. We will have no houses that load onto three E. Three E will actually have a full buffer between the sidewalk, grass or whatever, you know, plants and stuff, and then the back of the houses. No, none of us are gonna come up onto that street at all. We wouldn't, we would never have a back off onto a.
So that creates a pretty big buffer.
A real big buffer.
A real big buffer between the sidewalk and even the back fence of the adjacent houses.
And an additional buffer, and, and it's up to they, they want it or not. Um, the engineering's already told us, they want us to straighten out the road. Well, if you straighten out the road, it, we, we take up more of our land, we push it back.
Right.
We'll actually have land left over that, that could go to them to be buffers in front of their house. Because we're gonna, in order to straighten it out, we're going over ten, fifteen feet at some points.
Right.
Because right now, Dan's house, that, literally, people have almost driven down the street right into their driveway.
Hmm.
Because of how it is, but, but they'll be, they'll, we will have no houses on three E, it'll only be buffer.
That's, adds a lot of buffering on that, on that piece of property.
All right, any other questions? Very well, then, is there? Uh, a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen, approving a zoning map amendment for the property known as Timnuth Shores with the following conditions, to allow staff to work with the owner-applicant to address minor non-substantive modifications to final signatures, prior to final signatures.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mayor Proton, your motion.
I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Um, no, I mean, I think, uh, the development here, again, as, as spoken earlier, um, has the potential of being something special. Uh, I think, uh, it's safe to say that, um, everybody wins, when we all communicate well and we work with existing landowners to do what's absolute best by them, so I would, can't force it, but I would highly encourage open lines of communication uh, before stages, if possible, right? I mean, I think that only makes everybody's life a lot better. It makes our community an actual community, and it makes the residents, um, feel like they're being heard, especially those that have been there for a long period of time, so. Um, I think you guys do good stuff. I think you have the ability to do something super special here, um, and, uh, I'll be voting for it.
Councilman Jenkins.
Yeah, I think, uh, the way the road is described and the setbacks there, um, on three E are gonna provide a nice, a nice buffer for the adjacent properties, so. Yeah, I, I'm in favor of it.
All right, uh, having already annexed this, uh, really the question is, how should it be zoned? And we looked at the comprehensive plan, uh, and in the low-density residential, uh, R-two and RE are the two permitted uses. Uh, I'll note that there's an intentional change in the comprehensive plan, uh, to allow R-two. Uh, and so I think this is, uh, in accordance with the prior, uh, you know, kind of in, in intentional movement there. Uh, we've gotten into a lot of weeds in terms of setbacks and, and this and the other. Uh, you know, ultimately, uh, we rely on, and I have it here, our, you know, land use code, and for each zone, there are all sorts of setback requirements and, and rules, and, and we address that, and to the extent that that code isn't perfect, we're in the. And to the extent that that code isn't perfect, we're in the process of continuing to revise that and, and try to make it. Uh, try to make it uh, better. Uh, but just in the strict sense of what we're here to do today, we have to zone it something. Um, you know, this, this is absolutely um, in alignment with the comprehensive plan, so I will vote for it. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the zoning as proposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. All right, zoning is approved. Uh, we have come to the end of our agenda, so if there's no objection, we'll.